Okay, welcome everyone to this evening's meeting. We're going to have our invocation by Minister Terry Baskin. Okay, yes sir. It'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm always used to the minister sitting over here. But I understand you got a dual role here, so, uh... Yes sir, please stand with me.
It's truly honor to come this evening and lift up God's name, so let us pray. Heavenly Father, we just thank you, Lord, for this opportunity to come boldly to the throne of grace. We thank you heavenly Father for blessing us this day. We thank you Father because we call this day victorious. Thank you, Lord, for leading and guiding us in order in our footsteps. So right now, Almighty God, we just welcome you right now in the name of Jesus. Have your way in this meeting, Father. Let it be all of you, none of us. Let it be that you think through our minds, speak through our vocal cords, so that we know that it will be your will done here on earth as it is in heaven. So right now, Father, we lift up this body, the governance body of this county. We thank you heavenly Father that you would continue to bless these people, continue to guide and direct them, Father, because your word tells us, "In a man's heart he plans his way, but God orders our footsteps." So we thank you right now that this meeting we call victorious. In the name of Jesus, we pray this prayer, and all in agreement say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the April 5th, 2016 Regular Business Meeting. The first sort of business is the adoption of the agenda. Does any member want to offer any amendments?
Hearing non-may, we have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Is there a second? I'll second it, probably move in second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous.
Approval of the March 15th, 2016 Regular Business Meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes from March 15th, 2016.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably move in second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous.
Approval of the March 19th, 2016 Board of Commissioners Retreat Minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the retreat minutes.
Second.
Probably move in second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Absent.
Absent.
To abstentions. Proceed on, they were absent.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we will now have public comment. We do have citizens that have signed up. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and county of residency for the record, speak clearly into the microphone, and speaker should be courteous, respectful, and not use abusive language when addressing the board.
Dr. Anderson.
Good evening, everyone. Executive Commissioner, Attorney and Judge Ms. Shayna Rooks of Commission District Number Three. You will now undergo your evaluation that relates to your constituents that I may mention of in regards to your body of work, whether or not you left the district a better place with a better quality of life, and your response to your constituents' needs and requests, and your overall performance as a commissioner in addressing and meeting the needs and requests of your constituents that I said I would do when I spoke on this during the Tuesday, March 1st, 2016 Public Commendations Section. The answer to these questions is yes, you have. In your three and a half years as commissioner, you had regular quarterly meetings with your constituents, you brought numerous departmental directors, chief managers, and supervisors, and very important people to your meetings to talk to your constituents about the problems, to hear problems, concerns, and issues, and how they are addressing them, and also to state initiatives that will be happening in the county, you know, most notably the bus system. And also you had a great hire in your Director of Constituent Services of Commission District Number Three, Mr. Stephen Van Dyke, who is a very loyal and so great supporter of you, never speaking ill will of anyone, period, not directly, indirectly. Very professional, very organized, a hard worker like you, and fielding your constituents' phone numbers and email letters, and getting the right departmental directors, managers, supervisors, and chiefs involved to address and solve their problems. But his greatest accomplishment has been the Rooks Report, which he took your idea and made a very powerful super newsletter that is powerful packed with very valuable information, such as code enforcement information, quality of life, code ordinances, purposes, and definitions, Clayton County child curfew ordinances, keeping a disorderly place, ordinances, burglary prevention tips, Clayton County Police Gangs Initiatives, vacant property crime information, how to assess the Clayton County Police Department's crime mapping system, and other powerful information. This is his idea with, you know, taking your idea and making a great, super powerful newsletter that is second to none. I've been very impressed with this, and I've never seen a newsletter of this quality. He has great formatting, he lays it out great, formats it great, and it's powerful, and it's powerful, full of information, and it was first called Integrity and Pride when it first came out on March 25th, 2013. Commissioner, Attorney Judge Ms. Shayna Rooks, Executive Commissioner, Attorney Judge Ms. Shayna Rooks, your performance evaluation rating as it relates to your constituents is a 9.50 out of 10, which is a solid eight. Points were taken off because you made a decision to remove Greg Porter's police chief, which made some of your constituents unhappy, and also when you changed the name of the recreation center from your predecessor to South Clayton, so in being fair, that's why it's down to 9.50, but it is a solid eight. The evaluation for your Director of Constituent Services, Mr. Stephen Van Dyke, is a 10-plus out of 10, because not only has he performed admirably, the Rooks Report puts him into that 10-plus category, because like I said, this is a great and powerful newsletter that is second to none. So for both of you, you've done a great job for your constituents, for a great job well done to the both of you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Dee, I believe that's Dee Corley, or Corley.
Dee Corley of Cobb County.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Dee Corley, and I am a member of the Clayton County Citizen Oversight Committee. We on the committee have marveled at the ability of this and previous administrations to avoid the long arm reach of the law. Of course, it took a while to figure out how, for example, in 2012, $2 million could be withdrawn from the 2004 Sbloß account for a completely unrelated purchase of commercial property on Highway 54 in Lake City, or how withdrawals from the same fund for nefarious and again unrelated purposes were showing up under a bookkeeping heading titled "Varyous." We couldn't believe how this county was so proficient at wasting taxpayer dollars on things like forming fraudulent corporations like Karen's House of Shoes at this address. Actions like these reek of fiduciary and financial malfeasance committed with either criminal or incompetent intent. Those on this board, or those whom this board manages consistently avoid prosecution and/or disciplining every time these actions are uncovered. You, the board, and your employees act outside of, and in many cases in flagrant violation of official Georgia code, with little more than lip service being paid to every new transgression uncovered. Recently, the amazement was amplified when it was determined that this county was continuing to once again flagrantly violate their oath of office by and through the use of two county corporations, the Clayton County Governmental Finance Corporation and DACC. The former being a method by which this and other local cities and counties believe they are able to skirt or completely avoid Georgia code morality and common decency by entering into contracts with banks for the multi-year purposes of borrowing money against future tax receipts, putting all incoming commissioners in a position of either continuing this criminal activity or bankrupting and shutting down services currently offered. The latter is another flagrant misuse of taxpayer dollars concerning that, that the county, concerning property that the county has no business managing, at 1630 Phoenix Boulevard in College Park, which remains off the property tax roll so that any number of private deals can be struck that otherwise were beyond the scope of this board's charter. Now we find that there are three more variations of DACC, second, third, and fourth. Similarly, these entities contract with yet another corporate agency, the Development Authority, and this is merely the tip of the proverbial iceberg. When brought to the attention of the district attorney, you, the board commissioners, and the people, nothing is or was done to correct the matters. In fact, it's business as usual for all involved.
Thank you. I believe it's Jay James.
I'm Jay James from Paulding County. Like I said, my name's Jay James, and I'm a member of the Clayton County Citizens Oversight Committee. When people of this county are asked whether or not they believe corruption exists within the county government, to a man, the answer is yes. So ingrained in this perception that you, as the elected leaders of this county, also believe it is tolerable. Mr. Turner and the rest of the board, we at the CCCOC are here to tell you that it is not tolerable. And we will strive to remove all the offenders, whatever positions they might hold, and locate those outside of this good old boy network to prosecute to the fullest extent of the law, these violations and the morally corrupt violations of your oath of office. You were made aware of all of these actions over the past few years, and absolutely nothing was done to either indict or prosecute the criminals involved in most of the cases cited. You commissioners are the criminals. You are warned that by taking these issues up with the very group that gives you the green light to continue them, the attorney esquires, you would be falsely advised, and you were. You are warned that these attorney esquires who maintain titles of nobility and/or honor in direct violation of Article 1, Section 9, Clause 8, and Article 1, Section 10, Clause 1, were and are keeping you in a constant state of violating your oath of office. We understand that to become one of these people and return to positions you now hold back to constitutional compliance will be both physically and financially painful, but that's exactly what you are charged with doing. When we finally find a law enforcement agency willing to do their job and not continue as business as usual with the business as usual plan, where all transgressions are merely kicked down the road, you and your appointees and your employees will find it much less comfortable situation. The buck stops here in Clayton County, it stops with you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carl Swenson.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm sorry that I couldn't get on the agenda tonight because I had something that was going to really help the people here. I'll give it a quick go right now. The, on the desk back there, you will find some write-up as to how each and every one of you, each and every one of you can utilize something called the two-cent stamp. First-class postage guaranteed by the General Post Office. You can incorporate the same thing for your newsletters or whatever, using the three-cent or equivalent, and it's all in the code. It's all in the contract with the people. So it's been hidden.
All right, Mr. Swenson, can you please state your county of residency?
Sorry about that. I'm Carl Swenson. I live over in Henry County, but I'm a member of the Clayton County Citizens Oversight Committee. This is kind of important, and the reason I brought it up is because I've sent each and every one of you a letter, and I assume you've gotten them. I've talked to Michael, and I've talked to Terry Baskin, and they confirmed that they got them, so it does work. There's no tricks, there's nothing magical about this. But everybody who sends cards out for the holidays, what a treat to be able to do so at two cents a half ounce. It's right there if you want to use it. I use it, and I suggest you do too. But it goes to show something. It goes to show that there's a shadow, a shadow among us. There's a shadow in the post office, because what we have is a privately-run USPS chartered by, created by Tricky Dicky back in 1971, to take care of or just put into the coffers the General Post Office, of which there are two, one for the government, one for us. We need to use this. And when we use it, we need to think about how this is part of the shadow government system that we see running. We need to think about how whenever you guys have a contract that you have to enter into that lasts more than a year, you're doing so in violation of Georgia code. And just because you have a corporation to do this under, you can't shield yourself from that liability. You will be told you can, but you can't. It's going to come back, just like the two-cent stamp has come back, and it's going to be used. When the word gets out there, the General Post Office will be re-engaged, and it is being re-engaged right now. You can be a part of it, and that's not a bad thing. It's not a bad thing, violating the Georgia code is. But giving something to your people, giving something to the community, giving back, that's a good thing, and that's what I'm trying to do right now, right here, on behalf of the Clayton County Citizens Oversight Committee. And I hope each and every one of you have a blessed day, and thank you very much, Terry, for a beautiful opening prayer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment.
The board will now present two proclamations this evening. The first proclamation whereby Clayton County observes April 2016 as National Donate Life Month. Will the recipients of this proclamation please come forward at this time? Will the members of the board please rise from their seats and join them for the presentation?
And the proclamation reads, "Clayton County observes April 2016 as National Donate Life Month. Whereas, one of the most meaningful gifts that a human being can bestow upon another is the gift of life. And whereas, more than 121,000 men, women, and children await life-saving or life-enhancing organ transplants, of which over 5,590 reside in Georgia. And whereas, the need for organ, eye, and tissue donation grows daily as a new patient is added to the national waiting list for an organ transplant every 10 minutes. And whereas, the critical donor shortage remains a public health crisis as an average of 22 people die daily due to the lack of available organs. And whereas, organ, eye, and tissue donation can provide families the comfort of knowing the gift of donated organs, and tissue endows another person with the renewed hope for a healthy life. And whereas, donating life through organ, eye, and tissue donation is the ultimate act of generosity and kindness individuals can perform. And whereas, more than 4.7 million Georgians have already registered their decision to give the gift of life at www.donatelifegorgia.org. And whereas, Life Link of Georgia is the nonprofit community service organization dedicated to the recovery of high-quality organs and tissues for transplantation therapy. And whereas, Clayton County, Georgia supports Life Link of Georgia's life-saving mission. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2016 as National Donate Life Month in Clayton County, Georgia, and honor all those who made the decision to give the gift of life by focusing their attention on the extreme need for organ, eye, and tissue donation. I encourage all residents to take action and sign up on Georgia's donor registry at www.donatelifegorgia.org to discuss the miracle of transplantation as a family, and to make a family commitment to organ, eye, and tissue donation. In witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand and calls the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this fifth day of April in the year 2016. Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman."
And the final proclamation for this evening, Clayton County recognizes Grassroots Leadership Institute Class of 2016, as presented by Chairman Turner.
And the proclamation reads, "Clayton County recognizes the Grassroots Leadership Institute Class of 2016. Whereas, Clayton County is proud to honor 10 graduating students, Sharon Austin Edward, Chelsea Bivens, Sherry Carr, Jason Griggs, Brenda Harrison, Sheila Howard, Margaret Hunt, Cherie McKinney, Erica Mitchell, and Elon Rodney, of the 2016 Clayton County Grassroots Leadership Institute, GRLI. As part of the 13-week curriculum developed by the JW Fanning Institute for Leadership, various community leaders were brought in to instruct students on leadership development, the building of communities through collaborations, effective communication, understand and value diversity, group dynamics, conflict resolution, how to conduct a successful meeting, and economic development. And whereas, the mission since 2005 of the Grassroots Leadership Institute is to identify, train, and nurture emerging leaders to better serve the needs of Clayton County community. GRLI's purpose is to prepare a generation of leaders to meet future community challenge. And whereas, the students are assigned the task of developing and implementing community service-related events as part of their participation. The events can range from workshops to seminars to various other activities that help to raise awareness and provide viable solutions towards improving the overall community. The 2016 class project was Lead by Example, LBE, Youth Resource Movement. And whereas, the Board of Commissioners congratulates the Grassroots Leadership Institute Class of 2016 for taking the lead in addressing key issues in the community that will truly benefit all residents of Clayton County. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby support and proudly acknowledge the 2016 graduating class of the Clayton County Grassroots Leadership Institute for a job well done. In witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand and calls the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this fifth day of April in the year 2016. Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman."
The board will now consider requests of Deborah Brewer, Director of Central Services.
Ms. Brewer, please take them together unless a board member would like to single one out. Hearing non-may, please proceed.
Good evening, thank you. We have six requests. The first is a request for authorization to open a WEX Fleet Business Account utilizing the State of Georgia Contract Number 9999, SPD 0000112-001, for the Clayton County Correctional Institute to purchase fuel. The WEX Business Account documentation for the above referenced requests is attached for information, for your information, and funding is available through the 2016 Correctional Institute budget. This card replaces a Phillips 666 card that was, that is currently being used to purchase fuel for the prisoner van transport when it is in various locations within county so that they don't transport prisoners back for refueling. The second request is recommendation to purchase bread products utilizing statewide contract 9999, SPD 00091-002, statewide contract, 2016-04 Annual Contract. The recommendation is to utilize the statewide, statewide contract to purchase bread products for the Clayton County Correctional Institute from Bemco Bakeries, USA Incorporated, doing business as Earthgrains Bacon Companies located in Horsesham, Pennsylvania. Funding is available through the 2016 Clayton County Correctional Institute Food and Dietary Supplies Fund. The Department Recommendation Agreement, statewide contract, and statewide contract price sheet are attached for your review and information. The next is requests for first contract amendment for RFP 1508 Lake Spivey Multi-Use Trail Construction Phase One International Park to Reed Stevens Park for Clayton County, Georgia Parks and Recreation. The request is to amend the current contract with Llewellyn Construction Incorporated located in Marietta, Georgia, to adjust the scope of work and increase compensation by an amount not to exceed $50,000, and that includes a construction contingency and a 60-day extension of contract time. Funding is available to 2009 Greenspace, Greenspace Sbloß Funds. The Department Recommendation Amendment and Change Request Documents are attached for your review and information. The next is a recommendation for award for RFP 1517 Police Body Cameras for Clayton County, Georgia. The recommendation is to award to the most responsive and responsible proponent meeting the specifications that also had the highest score, Utility Associates located in Decatur, Georgia. The cost for years one through three, including cameras and maintenance, shall not exceed $50,000. Funding is available, available through two U.S. Department of Justice Grants, Edward J. Bryan Memorial Grant, and state drug funds for the initial acquisition. The valuation tabulation summary, Department Recommendation Agreement are attached for your review and information. The next is recommendation for award for RFP 1518 Service and Inspection of Generators for Clayton County, Georgia Annual Contract. The recommendation is being made pursuant to Section 2-1361, oh, I'm sorry. The recommendation for award is for overall, the overall lowest responsive and responsible bidder meeting the specifications, Power and Energy Services Incorporated located in Power Springs, Georgia. Funding is available through the Building Maintenance Department's General Fund. The Department Recommendation Bid Tabulation Summary Agreements are attached for your review and information. The final is a recommendation for award for RFP 1539 Maintenance and Repair Services for Fitness Equipment for Clayton County, Georgia. The recommendation for award is to the overall lowest responsive and responsible bidder meeting the specifications, which is Ready Fitness located in Cummins, Georgia. Funding is available through the Parks and Recreation General Fund, Fire Department's Fire and Maintenance and Repair Account, and Senior Services Other Contract Services Fund. The Department Recommendation The Department Recommendation Bid Tabulation Summary Agreement are attached for your review and information. And I neglected to state for, on RFP 1517 Police Body Cameras for Clayton County, Georgia, the funding is available for the initial acquisitions and for remainder years that will come from the Police General Fund if approved. The request is for you to approve the recommendation authorized to Chairman or his designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract and authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget accordingly.
All right, is there a motion?
Members of the Board, before you vote, I believe on RFP 1517, Ms. Brewer stated not to exceed $50,000, but in fact it's not.
Five hundred, five hundred thousand?
Five hundred thousand.
Kind of learn how to read.
All right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Probably moved and seconded. Any questions on any of the items? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
The Board will consider requests of Ramona Bivens, Chief Financial Officer.
Please take them together.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I have three budget amendments and one request for refund for your consideration this evening. Budget Amendment 2-32 is for the Fire Department. It's to increase the budget in the amount of $10,000 to provide additional funds for supplies and uniforms needed for the Fire Department. Budget Amendment 2-33 is for the prison. It's to increase the budget in the amount of $25,094 to provide additional funds for supplies and to purchase a new dishwasher. Budget Amendment 2-34 is for Superior Court. To increase the Superior Court budget to provide additional funds for contract fees, medical supplies, program supplies, office supplies, safety supplies, and travel and training in the amount of $34,261. The last item I have is a request for a refund check in the amount of $600 made payable to Bush White Norton, L.L.P., in Atlanta, and is to refund processed zoning verification letters. The property is actually located in the city of Riverdale, and they should be approving that instead of the county.
All right, do I have a motion? I'll make the motions as second.
Second.
Probably moved and seconded. Any questions on any of the items? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. Thank you.
The Board will now consider the request of Ms. Duggan's Human Resources Manager.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. I have one item to present today. The Superior State Court Administrator requests to delete a court panel assistant position at a grade 16 with an indigent defense and create an administrative assistant position at a grade 16 within Superior Court Administration. The court panel assistant position is currently vacant, and the change would be budget-neutral, having no financial impact.
All right, is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
The Board will now consider the request of Shalonda Miller, Senior Staff Attorney.
Good afternoon.
Please take them together unless somebody wants one singled out.
Yes, please. Will you take out 67?
2016-67, is there another one?
No.
Commissioner Ruckus, could you have one? All right.
Good afternoon. We have Resolution 2016-64, which would allow the county to enter an intergovernmental agreement with the City of College Park in an effort to comply with the State of Georgia 700 megahertz regional plan, which encourages smaller agencies to partner with larger agencies to promote spectrum efficiency. Resolution 2016-65 would allow the Parks and Recreation Department to partner with the American Red Cross to conduct a lifeguard and water safety instructor training academy on October 3rd, 2016 through October 7th, 2016, at the Steve Lundquist Aquatic Center. Two employees will receive training at a cost of $350 per employee, which would offset the cost to rent the facility. Resolution 2016-66 allows the Department of Information Technology to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Metro Atlanta, USAI, Inc. The county will receive funds with no matching funds required in the amount of $301,344 to procure equipment and services to enhance the communications between the county and other regional municipalities using the 700 megahertz public safety digital network. Resolution 2016-68 would authorize Clayton County to apply for, and if awarded, accept a 2016 supplemental local maintenance and improvement grant from the Georgia Department of Transportation for specified road projects in the amount up to $454,622, with a 30% local match of up to $136,387. Resolution 2016-69 would authorize Clayton County to enter into a license agreement with Greg Street Productions, Inc. to host a car and bike show at the Clayton County International Park on May 22nd, 2016, from 2:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m. Resolution 2016-70 would authorize Clayton County, on behalf of the Clayton County Solicitor General's Office, to accept 3,942 backpacks from the Infinity Athletic, L.L.C.A. Company for distribution to the Clayton County students. The backpacks would be handed over to the Board of Education in July for distribution for the 2016-2017 school year. Resolutions 2016-71 and 72 are related resolutions, and they would authorize Clayton County to enter into a purchase, to purchase a permanent easement from Lake Spivey Golf Club, Inc. and to accept a temporary construction easement from Lake Spivey Golf Club, Inc. for the construction of a pathway, a public pathway, for the amount of $35,000 at the intersection of Walt Stevens Road and Members Drive in Clayton County.
All right, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the resolutions as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved and seconded. Any questions on any of the items? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
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 Oppose. It's unanimous.
Resolution 2016-67 would allow the Clayton County Juvenile Court to apply for grant funds with no matching funds required in the amount of $750,000 from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council for the 2016 Juvenile Justice Delinquency Prevention and Treatment Program. This would allow the Juvenile Court to continue its current programs, which help to reduce the incarceration rate and repeat offenses of juveniles.
All right, is there a motion? I'll make the motions. There are second.
I'll second it.
Probably moved and seconded. Any questions?
I have a question.
Commissioner Edmondson.
Is this the program that's currently implemented throughout the Clayton County Public Schools?
Come on up, take the mic, please.
No, sir, it is not. You're speaking of the S.O.C. programs, and they are separate.
S.O.C., okay, this is the M.P.T. Never mind, okay, okay.
Just for the record, state your name and who you work for in position.
Ashley Martin, Juvenile Court.
Did I answer your question, Mr. Edmondson?
It did, it did. That's exactly what I wanted to know.
And just for clarification purposes, this is $750,000, no matching funds from the county
No, sir.
to go towards our youth to keep them out of jail and from becoming repeat offenders, correct?
Sir.
Okay, any other questions?
Well, I guess I'll go ahead and ask one, since she's up there. Ms. Martin, what is the difference between the S.O.C. and the M.S.T. programs?
M.S.T. is actually a service. It stands for multi-systematics, multi-systematic therapies. And it is a service that's provided to the kids. It's an intensive counseling service. The S.O.C. is a program that is separate. It's not even part of Juvenile Court. It is a program that is run with the school board instead.
So is this M.S.T. done while the kids are in school? Or is it just weekly?
No.
Reading the synopsis, it seems like you guys are engaging them in sports and after-school care, and that's not the case at all?
No, sir. No, sir. It is counseling services for high-risk youth. So those are the youth who are committing designated felonies. It is after-school so that they're not just roaming the streets of Clayton County. And it is from a licensed therapist provider.
Okay, so, and we're expecting between, what, 125 and 150 students each year? Or high-risk youth each year?
No, sir. This current year, we're looking at 108.
108.
The numbers dropped because there are fewer kids that are eligible for the program, but those services are still very intensive.
Now, intensive, I'm just looking, I'm just doing the math. So that's about $7,000 per kid per year. How often do the therapists meet with these high-risk youths?
Three times a week.
Three times a week throughout the entire calendar year?
Yes, sir. It's a year-round program.
Okay, okay. No more questions?
Any other questions? Any other board members? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
No. Nay.
Three to two, it passes. Thank you, Ms. Martin.
Members of the Board, I would request an executive session for personnel litigation and real estate, please.
Thank you.
For item number 20, I would call on the Chief Operating Officer, Dietrich Stanford, to present the request of the Community Development Department for board consideration and approval to grant Sun Guard Public Sector access to county data to configure TRACIT system.
Thank you, Chairman, Board of Commissioners. This is an item coming forth again. You asked for some additional support documentation from Mr. G.K. at our last board meeting regarding the context of the TRACIT software package. In short, Sun Guard is doing away with their one-solution product. This in turn will be a replacement. One of the things that you asked is how do we quantify this service? What you see in the letters, in essence, is the software is pretty much being provided to us at no cost. What we're paying for, in essence, is the actual services associated with the training of the staff, and that's outlined at roughly $6,400. Ms. Zachary is here as well, from Community Development, to answer any additional questions regarding the software, if you have any.
All right, is there any questions from any board members? Now, this item was for consensus or for action, Adam?
It's for consensus, forced to proceed forward with the TRACIT.
They're the ones opposed to moving forward with this request.
I am.
Anybody else? Do you have the Board's permission to move forward?
Thank you, sir.
The next three items are appointments, board appointments. The first is the appointment to the Housing Authority to fill the expiring term of Karen Lanier. The term is five years, expiring on May 11, 2021. This is a full-board appointment. Are there any nominations?
I'm going to ask to reappoint Ms. Karen Lanier. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Probably moved and seconded. Those in favor, aye. Aye. Oppose. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Item number 22 is the appointment to the Land Bank Board to fill the expiring term of Latrevia Cates. The term is four years, expiring on April 15, 2020. This is a full-board appointment. Are there any nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to reappoint Ms. Latrevia Cates.
I'll second it, probably moved and seconded. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
And the final appointment is to the Tourism Authority to fill the expiring term of Tom Maples. The term is four years, expiring on April 30, 2020. This is a full-board appointment. Are there any nominations? Hearing none. Mr. Chairman.
Has anyone talked again to Ms. Maples about this? I think I asked the last time. Or has anyone talked to Mr. Maples about his desire?
There was a discussion, not directly with him, but there seems to be information that I have. I was going to check with the clerk whether or not he has resigned or does not want to be reappointed. I have to confirm that, so if we can just hold off until next board meeting, I'll have a specific answer for you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, this does conclude this evening's agenda. There was a request to go into executive session on personnel, litigation, and real estate.
All right, motion going to executive session. I'll make the motions as second.
Second.
Probably moved and seconded. Those in favor, aye. Aye. Oppose. It's unanimous. Thank you all.